Okay. Kenata? Kenata?
Seventh regular session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. invocation by Honorable Councillor Aimé Moreno, then followed by the singing of the national anthem and Kageyan de Oro march.
Let us all remember that we're in the holy presence of God. For those who wish to make the sign of the cross, please do so. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of Kageyan de Oro. Amid our differences, help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service that in our ordinances, in exercising our oversight function and in representing our constituents, we may truly protect those who cannot protect themselves and forward the interest of the majority over and above personal interests. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders Kageyan de Oro needs. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Please be seated. Good afternoon to our councillors, our guests who are here today, our friends from the media, and of course, our staffs who are here. So, uh... Today, may I have Mr. Secretary to do the roll call, please?
Honorable Jocelyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer for the First District Councilors: Honorable Agapito E. Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger G. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Aimé Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George Isgokking, Honorable Jose P.P.S. Abu Jr., Honorable Malvern A. Esparsia. For the Second District Councilors: Honorable Ivona Yasinib Imano, Honorable Maria Lordes Esgaani, Honorable Jolene Mercedes Elbalaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Jose G. Magtahas Daba. For the ex-official members: Honorable Yan Lam Islim, Ligan ng mga Barangay President, and Honorable John Michael Elsano, City Escape Federation President, Dires Coram, Madam Presiding Officer.
Coram, the seventh regular session is hereby certified. Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Jocelyn B. Rodriguez, and good afternoon to our colleagues in the council, our friends from the media, fellow Kageanon's Mayong Hapon. I move, Madam Presiding Officer, to dispense with the reading of the minutes of meeting on August 8, 2022, and to consider the furnishing of its capi to every member as the reading itself.
Second, any objection? Motion is hereby carried.
I likewise move for the approval of the said minutes of meeting.
Second? Objection? Okay, motion is hereby carried.
In lieu of the absence and request of the Code General Manager to postpone the scheduled appearance before this August body, Madam Presiding Officer, we proceed with the regular item, which is supposed to be the special reports of the members of the council. And the first reporter would be Councillor Romeo Calizo as regards his intention to acknowledge a Kageanon who has exemplary served the Filipino people, who is also a nominee to the top outstanding Filipino search, Madam Presiding Officer. And Councillor Ed Cabanlas would like to render a report as regards his proposal on a certain road in the city for declaring an opening of this road pursuant to the power of the local government unit on road right-of-way and expropriation. And Councillor Maria Lordes Esgaani would like to render a report, Madam Presiding Officer, considering the urgency of a passage of a resolution that would support our intention to acquire one ambulance for the city of Kageyan de Oro. So, Councillors Calizo, Cabanlas, and Esgaani, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, Councillor Calizo, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good afternoon to you and to all my colleagues and to our guests, especially those at the gallery. My special report is in line with our tradition of giving due recognition to individuals from our city who render exemplary performance, Madam Chair. And with this, my special report covers all about an officer and a gentleman, a Philippine Marine officer. The name is Colonel Stephen L. Cabanlet, Philippine Navy Marines, General Staff Corps. So, having been a graduate of the General Staff Corps, Madam Chair, he is now a senior officer and probably in due time, he will soon be promoted to One-Star General of the Philippine Marines. He is a full-blooded, homegrown Kageanon, having been born here, raised here, and had his early educations here in Kageyan de Oro City until he joined his military career. I came across this information when I read all about the results of the selection of the 2022 Metro Bank Foundation Outstanding Philippine Awards. This is one of the awards that... where the candidates go to a rigid scheme, Madam Chair. And he is one of those chosen. So, I'll... May I read the item? Colonel Stephen L. Cabanlet, Philippine Navy Marines, the Assistant Chief of Unified Command Staff for Operations U-3. So, he is the one in charge of the operations in the West Philippine Sea, of the Western Command, was selected as one of the awardees of the prestigious 2022 Metro Bank Foundation Outstanding Filipinos on August 4, 2022. Colonel Cabanlet is best known for pioneering the Football for Peace Program in Suluh Province in 2011, when he was the Operations Officer of the Marine Battalion. The program enticed the youth to the sports as it promoted peaceful coexistence, camaraderie, teamwork, sportsmanship, and discipline. This approach, which veered the youth away from joining lawless groups, was adopted by other AFP units and some LGUs. It was recognized as an efficient tool in preventing and countering violent extremism by even the European Union. So, this was copied by foreign countries during the Asian Regional Forum on Violent Extremism held in Brussels, Belgium in 2017. Two local studies also made the same conclusion when they assessed the program's impact among the youth participants. Hailing from Kageyan de Oro City, Colonel Cabanlet belongs to the Philippine Military Academy Class of 1996. He pursued three graduate studies: Master of Arts in Education, Major in Physical Education, Master of Public Management, Major in Development and Security at the Development Academy of the Philippines, and Master in International Studies at the Deakin University in Australia. He is also an alumnus of the Defense and Strategic Studies at the Australian War College. Madam Chair, this is one among the other achievements of Colonel Cabanlet. And such achievements, of course, needs a character that can accomplish it. So, obviously, Colonel Cabanlet has showed the people of the Philippines, especially the youth here from Kageyan de Oro, a character worthy of emulation. And so with this, Madam Chair, following our normal tradition, at the proper time, I will propose for a resolution inviting the said Philippine Marine officer in this hall so that the appropriate recognition in its best form shall be afforded to him. Of course, that is a way where the Kageanons, the people whom the 20th City Council represent, shall show their way of appreciating shall show their way of appreciating one character, one trait, that should be followed especially by the youth. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilor Calizo. But before I forget, no, actually, it's Councilor Calizo's birthday last Thursday. Yeah, and of course, somebody will lead the song, so it's... So, it's going to be Councilor Ibi Imano. Okay, Councilor Ibi, please lead the song, lead the song, please.
Madam Chair, nag, I would just like to say that the birthday celebrant, Honorable Councilor Calizo, requested for James Judith. May we give the honor to give what, to grant the wish of Councilor Calizo, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Councilor. No, 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 you have to proceed, then you have to, ano, lead the song, Councilor Ibi. Okay.
May I ask everyone to please sing with me? Oh, you can also stand up, standing up would be fine as well.
Okay, go.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, Happy Birthday, Happy Birthday to... Faster this time! Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, Happy Birthday, Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, Honorable Councilor Calizo, sir.
Happy Birthday. But you're a man said money, Councilor James Judith. Joke, joke, ah, joke, joke. So, the next, who's the next? Speak, speak. Ah, okay, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer, Bibot Rodriguez, members of the City Council, members of the media, people of Cagayan de Oro. Madam Chair, he is about a road right boy that was not finished. It was left undone since 2011 up to now, 2022, that's around 11 years. On September 15, 2011, when the mayor was Mayor Dungu Imano and the Vice Mayor was, Vice Mayor, uh... No, no, Asenas, Ian Asenas. I was also a member of this council, I do not know what number this council was. Is this the 17th, 16th, I do not know yet, it's not here. 10 council. Now, and during the construction of that, uh... Makasandig, a pit bridge, Cagayan Access Road. There is that bridge there with, I think, four or five access roads, or tunda. This, the City Council appropriated the sum of 1,110,075 pesos from the non-office land acquisition and expropriation fund of the City Government to acquire or to pay the claim for just compensation of the lot owned by the Cagayan de Oro Bell Church Foundation Inc. Now, that was September 2011. And on February 14, 2012, not less than one year after, another amount of 112,000 was appropriated by this City Council to pay the balance, the full payment of the balance of this acquisition. Now, what is this? According to the records, when the access road was being constructed, the City Government, in order to get the correct width of that road, has to expropriate a portion, a portion of the Bell Church, a portion long. And it's around 300 square meters. But there was a fence surrounding that property, so there is a necessity to, to transfer the fence, inner, on the inner portion of the property. And the agreement was for the City Government through the City Engineers' Office to construct the new fence, now excluding the area that was built by the City Government. So, there are now two fences, the original fence and the fence that was constructed by the City Engineers' Office. So, if you look at that area now, there are two fences. So, I do not know what happened, Madam Chair, that until now, the original fence was not removed so that we can improve that area and can be used by the public, especially so that we have already paid more than 1 million for that property. Come up here and can add the access road to tambuk and the inner portion of Makasandig. But I'm just a co-sitter now. I do not know nga laging, ano nga naitambuk kininga, wala atong karoodha, wala ma, atong magamit. That was 11 years ago. So I would like to have this investigated. And a report should be submitted to us by the Committee on Engineering. Call all these parties and then let them explain why it took 11 years. Wala na atong ni magamit, nga nabayran naman. We have all the records here, Madam Chair. So with this report, I would like to request that this be referred to the Committee on Engineering and for this committee to report why, why, why it took us this long? And until now, the road was not open when you have already paid the property. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, this will be... Okay, Councilor Seno, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer. Hello, Councilors, friends from the media. Cagayan Anons, may hapon ka natong tanan. I would like just to ask Councilor Ed Cabanlas, the good reporter, Madam Presiding Officer, to furnish us the copies so that we could invite the parties, no? And we asked our secretary to schedule it on Friday so that we could have a series of investigation as regards to this special report of the good counselor. Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Councilor Seno. So this will be referred to the committee, providing a copy. Ah, they will be called, no? The, ano, okay. So the next reporter is Councilor Ed... Councilor Lourdes Gaani, you're recognized.
Salamat, Madam Chair, may hapon ka natong tanan. I stand here today to request for a City Council Resolution for a land ambulance as one of the primary attachment for the deed of donation from Department of Health Center for Health Development Northern Mindanao. This ambulance will be given to the JR Bora General Hospital as one of the recipients under Health Facilities Enhancement Program, HFEP for General Appropriation Act, calendar year 2022, with an allocation amounting to 2,500,000 pesos. As chair of the Health and Health Insurance Committee, I therefore propose for the passage of a resolution for the ambulance as the primary attachment to the deed of donation. Thank you, and may hapon ka natong tanan.
Thank you, Councilor Lourdes Gaani. So may we proceed. Councilor Ayan Martnakaya, Majority Leader.
At the proper time, first?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. We have four items, 1, 2, 3, and 4, omnibus motion for having the same subject matter. And one is proposed Resolution Number 2022-43, Returning to the Sangguningang Kabatahan of Barangay Balubal, this city, it's Resolution Number 2 Series of 2022. Number 2 is proposed Resolution Number 2022-44, Returning to the Sangguningang Kabatahan of Barangay Bulwa, this city, it's Resolution Number 02 Series of 2022. 3, proposed Resolution Number 2022-45, Returning to the Sangguningang Kabatahan of Barangay Kamaman and this city, it's Resolution Number 4 Series of 2022. And 4, proposed Resolution Number 2022-46, Returning to the Sangguningang Kabatahan of Barangay Kaoswagan, this city, it's Resolution Number 1 Series of 2022, covering the respective annual budgets for calendar year 2022 with estimated incomes with the information that said resolutions are operative in their entirety. May we ask the chair to recognize Councilor Jan-Michael Seno.
Councilor Jan-Michael Seno, please, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, once again, Madam Presiding Officer. Considering that it's gone through the series of review by the local finance committee, I am now proposing for the approval of the Resolution Number 2022-43, Resolution Number 2022-44, Resolution Number 2022-45, Resolution Number 2022-46.
Second, any objection? Motion is carried.
Move to dispense second final reading.
Second, uh, second, any objection? Motion is hereby carried.
Number 5, Madam Presiding Officer, is proposed Resolution Number 2022-47, Returning to the barangay council of barangay Kaoswagan, this city, it's ordinance number... By the way, move for the... Did I already place the motion for the approval of the second and final reading? Move for the approval of the second final reading, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second.
For the 1, 2, 3, 4.
Any objection? Motion is hereby carried.
Number 5 is proposed Resolution Number 2022-47, Returning to the barangay council of barangay Kaoswagan, this city, it's ordinance number 01-2022, Series of 2022, entitled "An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of 69,250 pesos from the 5% Local Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Fund of barangay Kaoswagan to be made available as financial assistance to the herion list of victims whose residential houses and belongings were either totally or partially damaged by fire on November 26, 2021, at Zone 6, Zone 5, and Zone 4 of barangay Kaoswagan, this city, which was declared by the Sangguningang barangay as calamity area under Resolution Number 11-2022 dated January 17, 2022, with the information that said ordinance is operative in its entirety." May we ask the chair to recognize Councilor Yan Lam Lee, Madam Presiding Officer.
Councilor Yan Lam Lee, you're recognized.
May hapon, Mr. Chair. Um, Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Bebo Rodriguez. Considering that everything is in order, I move to approve the Resolution Number 2022-47.
Second, any objection? Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, any objection? Motion is hereby carried.
We have items 6A and B. May we segregate these items and consider first the first 6A so that the appearance would be in order, Madam Presiding Officer. 6A is proposed Resolution Number 2022-48, Confirming the Appointment of Attorney Joffrey D. Namalata as City Government Department Head to City General Services Officer with all rights and privileges appurtenant thereto. Before we place a motion, Madam Presiding Officer, is Attorney Namalata present? Okay. If the Presiding Officer would allow.
Yes, please. Congratulations, Attorney Namalata.
May I move, Madam Presiding Officer, to suspend the rules?
Okay, rule suspended.
Attorney Namalata, please address the Presiding Officer and the members of the council.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to the honorable members of the City Council and to the people of Cagayan de Oro. It's a great honor to stand before this august body, and I'm looking forward to serve the people of Cagayan de Oro City, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Namalata. So, congratulations again. So are we going to have...
If there are questions from the members?
Yeah, any questions?
If there is none, Madam Presiding Officer, so we move to lift the suspension of the rules.
Okay, suspension, lift, uh, what do you call this? It's lifted.
I move, Madam Presiding Officer, to approve proposed Resolution Number 2022-48.
Any objection? Being none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, objection? Motion is hereby carried.
For the next item is 6B, proposed Resolution Number 2022-49, Confirming the Appointment of Mr. Paterno L. Gonzalez Jr., actually, he's an engineer, as a City Government Department Head to City Agricultureist with all rights and privileges appurtenant thereto. The same, Madam Presiding Off...
May we call?
Move to suspend the rules, Madam Presiding Officer.
Rule suspended. Second.
Engineer Gonzalez can address the City Council.
Madam Chair, good afternoon, Vice Mayor Bebo Rodriguez, members of the Council of Cagayan de Oro City. I'm very glad to be here and I'm ready to serve the city of agriculture so we can help our farmers.
Thank you, thank you, Engineer Gonzalez, congratulations.
Madam Chair, I'm not an engineer, I'm just a city agricultureist.
Ah, okay.
An agricultureist, an agricultureist.
Licensed agricultureist.
Licensed agricultureist.
Not agri-engineer?
No.
Not an agri-engineer?
No, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So thank you very much, thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez, and again, congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
If there are no questions, Madam Presiding Officer, move to lift the rules.
No questions? Okay. The rules is lifted.
Move to approve proposed Resolution Number 2022-49, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second, any objection? Motion is hereby carried.
So congratulations to both confirmed department heads of the City Government of Cagayan de Oro, Attorney Joffrey Namalata for the City General Services Office and Mr. Paterno Gonzalez for the City Agriculture Office. So congratulations. We have for inclusion, Madam Presiding Officer, as items number 7, 8, and 9 presented by Councilor... Council, 9 and 10, Councilor Romeo Caliso has presented his desire to pass a resolution acknowledging the extraordinary efforts of the gentleman Colonel Cabanlet and that of Councilor Gaani. So 7, 8, 9, 10, Madam Presiding Officer.
Any, any objection?
For inclusion.
For inclusion, yeah. Second, any objection? Are you hearing none? Motion is hereby carried.
For number 7, Madam Presiding Officer, is the proposed ordinance Number 2022-04, Accepting the offer of A. Brown Company Incorporated to donate a 700-square-meter parcel of land located in barangay Balulang, this city, to be used as control center of the Philippine National Police and Bureau of Fire Protection of Cagayan de Oro City and for this purpose authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Oue to enter into and sign the deed of donation executed by A. Brown Company to be represented by its president and chief executive officer, Mr. Robertino I. Pizarro. No, Robertino, no. Under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second, any objection? Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, any objection? Motion is hereby carried.
For number 8, Madam Presiding Officer, is proposed Resolution Number 2022-50, Adapting Executive Order Number F013-2022 dated 26... 26 July 2022 issued by Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Oue, entitled "An Order Adapting Further Fiscal Measures and Control on the Execution of the Annual and Supplemental Budgets of the City Government of Cagayan de Oro in view of the Financial Recovery Program due to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic." Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second, any objection? Objection? Okay, Councilor James Judith, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, Vice Mayor Joseline Bebo Rodriguez, ako mga tinahod na kauban dini sa konseho, atong mga bisita nga nadia sa likod ng bahin sa atong gallery, ang dini sa session hall, ang atong mga miyembro sa prensa, o ang atong pinanggang katawan sa dakbaan sa Cagayan de Oro sa inyong tanan, maupay. Ang ako lang, inani lang, Madam Chair, gusto lang ako klaruhon kahigiinong mga dini sa proposed Resolution Number 2022-50, Adapting Executive Order Number F013-2002 dated July 26, July 2022, issued by Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Oue, entitled, dini lang, ang ako gusto lang maklaro, "An Order Adapting Further Fiscal Measures and Control on the Execution of the Annual and Supplemental Budgets of the City Government of Cagayan de Oro in view of the Financial Recovery Program due to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic." Klaruhon ko lang, wala manggot gitatao kung unsa baleng mga fiscal measures ang but pasabot dini. Gusto lang ako klaruhon, kah blancet manggot mo mayong magtag... further fiscal measures, kah mayong magtag fiscal measures apil na ana, matut pasad definition nga imong i-manipulate ang allocation o nga ay pag-usap sa allocation sa government resources o expenditures. So unsa nga further fiscal measures pwede ba nga maklaro na'to? Gi- enumerate ba ni? Gi-klaro ba ni giniunsa nga mga lakang ang imo-on nga para na ay mas kontrol ang atong mayor sa gitawag na execution sa atong budget? Mula'to, dagang salamat.
Thank you, Councilor James Judith. Any comment? Okay, Councilor Ayan Martnakaya.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, and thank you, Councilor James, for the question. We have under Executive Order Number F013-2022 duly executed by his owner, the City Mayor, and attested by the City Budget Officer. The 1, 2, 3, 4 points that the cit... At the back. Ah, okay. Wala na 'yan, nakwan, nakita. So, okay na.
Okay na.
As enumerated, Madam Presiding Officer. So the City Mayor has explained as to how he would like to proceed with the austerity measure and the soon-to-be the act of the... Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Councilor Ayan Martnakaya. So naslikod? Okay. But then, I understand that the executive is an independent body also. They can decide on what they want to do, no? With their budget, so...
We are showing our support, Madam President, Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Well, anyway, you've read it, so let's proceed, Councilor Ayan Martnakaya.
Pending motion is for the approval.
Okay, approval? Any objection? None? So motion is carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, objection? Are you hearing none? Motion is hereby carried.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. For item number 9, is proposed Resolution Number 2022-51, Commending and congratulating Cagayan on Colonel Stephen L. Cabanlet, JSC Philippine Navy Marines for being awarded as one of the 2022 Metro Bank Foundation Outstanding Filipinos, thereby giving honor and pride to Cagayan de Oro City, its officials and residents. May we ask the chair to recognize Councilor Romeo Caliso.
Councilor Romeo Caliso, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I move to for the approval of this head resolution.
Any second? Any objection? Being none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, any objection? Motion is carried.
For item number 10, is proposed Resolution Number 2022-52, Earnestly requesting the DOH Health Facility Development Unit to donate one unit land ambulance from the Health Facilities Enhancement Program under the General Appropriations Act GA of CY 2022 in the amount of 2.5 million. May we ask the chair to recognize Councilor Maria Lourdes Gaani.
Councilor Lourdes Gaani, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of proposed Resolution Number 2022-52.
Any second? Objection? Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Any objection? Are you hearing none? Motion is hereby carried.
There being no other pending, Madam Presiding Officer, move to adjourn.
Okay, session is adjourned. Thank you! Salamat, salamat. Ready na niyo snacks.